Afternoon for the special meeting of the Sandeston DRI change, November 7th, 2017, at 1 o'clock. Sidney?
Yes ma'am, thank you. Commissioners, this is a quasi judicial land use item, so at this time I would ask if any of you have had any ex parte communications on this item?
I have.
Okay. If you would, I'll make sure that you get your forms to the clerk.
Most of us do.
Okay, that's fine. You can turn them to the clerk within 15 days of today's meeting. Would any of those ex parte communications make it difficult for you to render a fair or impartial decision in this matter?
None.
Okay. I guess before we get started, we'll go ahead and swear all the witnesses in en masse. Anyone who anticipates testifying, if you would, stand and raise your right hand.
Yeah.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you will provide to this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Whenever you come forward, if you would, just state your name, spell your last name, and state that you've been sworn in. We do have a court reporter present, so please just be respectful of her and make sure that no one talks over each other so she can have a clean record. With those preliminary matters, I'm going to turn it over now to Mr. Matthews, who represents SDI, the applicant.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Dana Matthews, representing Sandeston Investments. As we mentioned to you a month or so ago when this meeting got set, Mr. Hunter, Gary Hunter, on behalf of Sandeston Owners Association is here with us today, and myself have worked through a series of issues at Sandeston post April 11th, 2017, when y'all adopted ordinance 2017-12. That's the ordinance number that y'all adopted. You know, since that date, Sandeston Owners Association filed what they had the right to do lawsuits and with what we call FLAW, Florida Land Water Judiciary Commission, as well as in Walton County Circuit Court, comp plan challenge alleging inconsistency with the comp plan by the county's adoption of it. They actually sued Walton County in both those actions. SDI intervened in both those actions. And after wrangling around for a month or so, we spent the next three and a half months sitting down at the table with the principals of Sandeston Owners Association, their board, and my client, and the lawyers, and after about three months, we entered into a global settlement agreement. That document was executed by the parties on September 25th of this year. That document has many issues that were not part of the ordinance that y'all adopted, due with other issues between the parties in terms of the resort and operations of the resort and those kind of things. But as to the county is concerned, if I can refresh your memory that when y'all approved the NOPC, that which you approved, you recognized there were 1,873 residential dwelling units that were entitled remaining out there at Sandeston. And out of those 1,873, the allocation was that there was 1,057 that were left remaining built and to be developed on what we call the north side of Highway 98, and there were another 316 units on the south side of 98. One of the issues that was resolved in the settlement was reducing that number from 1,873 to 1,564 RDU's, which is a 309 residential dwelling unit elimination from which you had previously approved. The other thing is, there had to be an allocation. Where do they come from? Where do the eliminated ones come from? So on the south side, which y'all had approved for 316 units, that drops down to 200 units. And on the north side, where you'd approved 1,057, that actually dropped down to 624. And you're going to say, well, where's the other? I'm going to get to that in a minute. What's important to me, I think, is to, in a summary version, is to show you where these changes occurred, and pictures speak a thousand words. So if you start with the 200 RDU's that the proposed revised ordinance 2017-12 has been submitted to you as part of your package, where the 200 RDU's can be built are only within these three parcels right here, parcel 113B, 121C, and 126. I know it's kind of an unapproached, this is a part, but you'd like to get it up, make it so clear. This is 113B, affectionately called the Lagoon's parcel. It's outlined in red. That's a potential development site. 121C, it's an undeveloped piece here, has the leg on it in this area outlined in here. That's another development site. And then you have parcel 126, which is currently operating as a parking lot. That's another development site. These 200 RDU's, according to the revised ordinance that we submitted to you for your consideration and part of the settlement agreement, will be cumulatively potentially developed within those three sites and these three sites only. You may remember in the ordinance that y'all adopted, under exhibit D7, that the developers are the right, approved by the county, to make land use adjustments, lifetime transfers and non-life time transfers based on various conditions and various procedures that have to evolve with the county. But they have agreed, as the revisions to the ordinance, that they will not utilize those type of process to alter these 200 RDU's from these sites. In other words, not going in any other sites. You may recall that part of the original application for the NOPC, we also had density allocated to what they call the fins parcel, I think it's parcel 113B or AA. We removed that from consideration during the course of the public meetings, and therefore there was no density that was allocated to that site, and there is no density being allocated to that site as part of the settlement agreement between the parties. The, I told you, we had to start out with 1,057 that y'all approved on the north side of 98, and what we agreed is, and what the revised ordinance is being proposed to you, shows that that number goes down to 490 RDU's north of 98, just among these five parcels right here. So you start with parcel, this is what we call the Marina parcel. It's outlined in red for potential future redevelopment. You have, this undeveloped parcel is the, oh, this is in the village. Then you've got this area, Village, you've got Monarch, which is this empty space, you've been reported on the north side of the village area. And that is where, then you've got Toly Island. The 490 can be allocated among those five sites, obviously with the development or process of the county on any of its development in the future. But that's the change from what you had previously approved. So went from 1,057 down to 490 here. Then we have 24 units that were, this is the Raven Golf Course, where the club out, there's some vacant land there, they might have wanted to consider maybe doing a play and say, down a project in the future. The 24 units are allocated to that. There's the, and this is no different than the last time, except we had 500 RDU's that were allocated to parcel 208 Railway, which is Grand Boulevard. You may recall from the testimony that there's an old interwest agreement with Grand Boulevard, and whether that's an contractual agreement, not contractual agreement, everybody agreed to not push that issue at this point, but the extent that there, any 500 RDU would be allocated to this, and there's a further agreement with SOA, that those 500 units could also be on additional annexed property, but not property where you could go into the existing gates. That was one of the things that was important in the settlement discussion with SOA and the agreement, is that no more, other than the 490 that I showed you over there, and then the 200 on the south side, any of these 500 units need to be within here or with another annexed property, but not coming in with the existing gates of Sandeston. The balance of 240 RDU units, those were broken down in an area that is actually not part of the DRI. Remember, you go through the north gate, around the back, state of the local spray to the bank of the conference center, and through the, that's called the vested area, that 340 some of the acres, that's not part of the DRI. However, we have asked, and we proposed, and part, which is not part of the NOPC before, that y'all approved, is that those 240 RDU would not go away, but they would be specifically allocated to these specific sites. And this is the Linkside Conference Center, Linkside Center, it would all, the Link driving range, which you'll see, oh, in this area up here, all up in red. Now, right now, that property is zone coastal center, not part of the DRI. So right now, whatever your comp plan, whatever your LDC says, that's what covers, you know, that piece of property. And for the developer to develop that property into any height and access, it would be 250 foot, then it would require us to come back to an LDC, an annexation agreement, what we call a comp plan overlay district, could not, could be another process, would be come back before the commission, and it would be an involvement, like I said, one of those three forms, and it would be something in the future. There's also 134 RDU's that were out headed to what we call the admin parcels 212 and 215, and the four golf holes on Baytown. These are parcels 215 and 212, probably never been there, but if you went into the resort by the Apple Bay Gate, and you went in, and you turned to the right, and there's another rough road to the right, and that takes you back in here, and that's where the, that's one of the accesses, and the regional utility property here that they have, you know, the old admin buildings, you know, they should move now to where the new welcome center is. You've got the trash refuges and collection area, you've got the storage area back there, you've got other buildings that, for the golf, making for the golf course. All that's in these areas right here, it's outlined in red. These 134, again, cumulatively, would be allocated to these, and really, not to, not to, we can tell these properties, I've got to put them on the floor there, this piece right here. And then also, these are the four golf holes, so those are the ones right in front of the resort on the north gate, if you're coming from Apple Bay and dead and west, those are the four holes you see on the right, and they're outlined in here. Again, this would, there's also an agreement that none of these 134 RDU's would be sought by the developer SDI to be developed for a five-year period, beginning this past September, so basically, Callan Moore's or, or whatever you want to call it, but there's a five-year prohibition to seeking any development approvals, and to be able to change the use from golf course, obviously, we'd have to go through a process with the county to change the use from a golf course to residential, if that was the desire at the time by the developer. Again, we'd be back before the county, on the NOPC, or on the top of shop creating change. So that pretty much explains how it goes from 1,873 to 1,564. But out of that 1,564, you've got 500, and that you can't do anything to other, because they don't live in the neighborhood, some other property that you can somehow buy up with that, and 134, we have to come back to y'all, and that has to happen after five years, and another 240, you have to come back, again, because you're in the vested area, so we'd be looking at some kind of comp plan overlay district. Those are the primary changes. There's one other, we had in the NOPC ordinance, there was an exhibit, if you remember, Amusements and Attractions. We had the right, developer had the right to put amusements and attractions in, that was an historical use, has been improved in the past. But if there was anything that was done, it would have to be drawn down as commercial drawdown. Those things still apply, except now SDI cannot seek to develop any amusement or attractions without the written consent of Sandeston Owners Association. So that exhibit to the ordinance has been revised to reflect that, or a program. There were, if you may remember, there were half a dozen exhibits to the ordinance, all of which that were vetted through by staff and through the BCC at each of the meetings in January and in March. Those exhibits have been changed to reflect these agreements that were in the settlement agreement between SOA and SDI. Ms. Noyes has reviewed all those, Ms. Bradley has reviewed all those, to make sure that we didn't leave anything out. The other things, and I just want you to know that, again, this is not for your consideration necessarily, but more for your background, as part of your consideration today. The global settlement agreement, as I mentioned at the beginning, also encompasses a number of other things that have nothing to do with the county through the NOPC process, but had a whole lot to do between the two parties in terms of outstanding issues that they've been wrestling with for a long time. I just want to briefly cover some of those, because you've heard some of the collateral of that during the course of the proceedings that y'all listened to in January and March. One of which is that they've agreed to work together on a structured parking on two different parcels by the Marina, and also by the village, in the future, work together to determine the feasibility of structured parking, provide additional parking for the village, and a cost sharing allocation dealing with that. There's currently 150 parking spaces that SDI has allowed SOA to use down by the beach. You remember the discussion about beach compaction, and not enough parking. So those 150 spaces stay in place, and there's also a commitment on any of the redevelopment of the one or two of the parcels south of 98, that there will be an additional 50 parking spaces provided by SDI, and if more can be done, then that'll, the parties will work together to see if that's possible. There was questions about the owners not having enough restrooms, or a beach vending service down there on the west side down by the beach. We've codified in writing that the current restroom facilities will be able to be used by the owners out there and their guests, and as well as provide beach vending services. There is a traffic circle. The engineers have come up with some conceptual ideas for a traffic circle. So if you go through the north gate, you turn to the right, remember Osprey Point's on your left, and then you come to the three-way stop, Baytown Avenue, turn left to go to Baytown Mall. They're talking about putting a traffic circle there that Sandeston Investments will be contributing the land to. And even before you get to that, right before you get to the traffic circle, cutting through SDI property, kind of what I call jogging off, I think we call it a bridge road that extends the east, that that road is also, and the engineering will be worked on, and SDI will provide the land and an additional $125,000 toward the cost of construction. These, again, are things that the parties are working on together, and have put a fine point on their obligations. Stormwater management plans, as you know, have to be submitted as part of any development to the county, the engineering, has to be approved. We've provided a mechanism for that to be provided to SOA simultaneously, for their independent review and their engineers' reviews, so they could stay on top of what type of stormwater management might be being considered for any particular developed parcel. SDI has provided options to SOA to be able to acquire a piece of property within the admin area, the old admin building, a part of it, so SOA could potentially build their own office building, and have their own traffic, trash compact area. SDI has given SOA an option to purchase, or a lease, that admin parcel prior to them having exercised an option to purchase. And again, just working together, it's been a thing with SOA, they've had to rent their office building for a long time. We've tried, parties trying to work together to see if the developer can assist them in that regard. There are some outstanding other financial issues that were all resolved, and after all that, then there was a stipulation that the parties signed and filed with Judge Lewis in our circuit court case, and that stipulation and order that the judge signed required SDI, as the applicant, to come before to set a meeting before this board, to consider this revised ordinance, the revised ordinance that you have before you with all those exhibits, were all attached to the judge's order and what the parties had agreed upon, and that's how we got to where we are today. I think Ms. Noyes can confirm for you that if the county was to approve this revised ordinance, that that lawsuit is going away, as well as the FLAW case, and the county will have no legal fees that they will have associated with that. Matter of fact, all part, we can't speak to the county, because the county's not part of this settlement, but in terms of SDI and SOA, both parties have agreed to bear their own costs and their own attorney's fees as part of this. That's a pretty good summary. I've provided these specific changes in letter form. It was attached to Ms. Bradley's staff report that was submitted to y'all, I presume it's in your package, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
And Mr. Matthews, did you have exhibits that you wanted to introduce?
Yes ma'am. And also, with a agreement with SOA and with the county, is I'm going to give exhibit Exhibit one is a summary of, from the board's clerk, of all exhibits that were previously introduced on January 30th and March 13th. I had asked Ms. Noyes to make sure all those exhibits were available to you, if you so chose to look at them. We all agreed that because there were several thousand pages, that it would be unnecessary to bring them again today, so that is the docket for that. The second, exhibit two, and I've only brought one for the clerk, because I was told this would be in your package, is Ms. Bradley's staff report sent through Mr. Carpenter, dated November 7th, 2017, and all her exhibits to that staff report. And if you read it, then you'll know that the county has found, staff has determined that the requests today are consistent with your comp plan and your LDC. Exhibit three has been provided to the county, I'll just read this to you. When we submitted, when we got the hearing date with y'all, we went ahead and sent a copy of the proposed revised ordinance that y'all are going to be considering today to DEO, Department of Economic Opportunity in Tallahassee, and we sent it to the West Florida Regional Planning Council, as we thought we should, as well as to, of course, Mr. Hunter had got a copy, and David Theriault, who represented Beachside Two Condominiums, and showed up at least one of the prior BCC meetings, to a guy named Nick Beniata, who was a lawyer that showed up for, I think it was Driftwood Two HOA. We also provided it to Sean Heath, who showed up on behalf of Driftwood One HOA, so made sure that everybody had the same information that we had, that county had, and letting them know about today's meeting. We did get a response from Sherri Spires at DEO, it's dated November 1st. It's sent, an email sent to me and copied, West Florida Regional Planning Council, Gary Hunter, Sidney Noyes, Ken Metcalf, and James Stansberry, who is her boss. And it said, Dana, thank you for providing the department a copy of proposed revised ordinance 2017-12, a Walton County Development Order Amendment for the Sandeston DRI. If the ordinance is adopted and rendered to the department by Walton County, we will conduct our formal review. However, at this time, we have not identified any concerns with the proposed revised ordinance you provided to us. Thank you. Please let me know if you have any additional questions. And I've made this available to everybody as well. This will be exhibit three. West Florida Regional Planning Council, takes a little longer to respond, and so I just got the email from Caitlin Cerame, C-E-R-A-M-E, today, and it says, it was actually addressed to Ken Metcalf, and then he forwarded it to me. Thank you for providing the West Florida Regional Planning Council a copy of proposed revised ordinance 2017-12, a Walton County Development Order Amendment for the Sandeston DRI pursuant to Chapter 38006, 19E1 Florida statutes. The revised ordinance indicates a future possibility of reduction in open space and addition of land to the DRI, which we reviewed as a NOPC, should they come forward in a future amendment. However, at this time, we have not identified any concerns with the proposed revised ordinance you provided to us. Her comments are the same things I'd told you before. So that's exhibit four. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
We have some questions.
Yes ma'am.
I have one question. You said you were eliminating some parking in one area parking lot. Where are you going to reload that, relocate that parking?
We're not, this ordinance is not relocating any parking. It provides for potential future development, for example, on this parking lot here, we can't, we have, or we can't get a replacement. When we came back to you on a development order application, we would have to have equal to or more, because you're going to put development there as well. So we're not seeking to eliminate any parking in what we're doing here today.
Any other questions? Mr. Matthews, why did you not provide certification mail notice for people within 300 feet of the property?
We don't think that it's required, because it's a, it's a continuation of an ordinance that was adopted by the commission, and it's been in litigation. And there is an indemnity agreement, as you know, Ms. Nipper, from a hearing that was, that was approved a month ago, I believe it was, or a couple weeks ago, I guess it was, and that's the reason. And the property was posted as to every entrance into the resort, and there were emails sent by Sandeston Owners Association to 4,800 email addresses, or so there about, Mr. Hunter could tell you that, probably better, Tom Cooper, and we sent it to the 2,200 email addresses we had, and we sent it to every lawyer who'd been involved in any of the proceedings previously. And to spend another $44,000 to send mailouts, we thought was not necessary, in light of this being a continued application with a revised ordinance.
You didn't use words continued. This is a resolution, and changes are being made. The Florida statute 125 and the Land Development Code require notification. Just that you chose not to do it doesn't mean it's acceptable. Our Land Development Code states you have to do it. Florida statute 125 says you have to do it.
I'm very familiar with the statutory requirements, Ms. Nipper, and we could agree to disagree. That's okay.
Okay. That's fair enough, as long as I've made my point. Any other questions? Mr. Hunter, would you like to come forward?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
I'll be brief. Gary Hunter, on behalf of the Sandeston Owners Association. What a difference eight months makes. Mr. Matthews did a really good job, I think, accurate job, of summarizing the revisions that are before you, and summarizing the additional items that aren't part of the ordinance that were resolved among the parties. My client and SDI spent an inordinate amount of time over, about a four-month process, working through these issues. We are here today comfortable with where that ended up. It took, as I said, a lot of energy to get to that point, and you all know how we felt about it before we got to that point, because I've expressed that to you on multiple occasions. We would very much appreciate your support of this revision. It is something that the SOA board ultimately was, as I said, we've approved and are supportive of ourselves, and in concert with SDI, are now comfortable with what's being asked of you. So a very different posture than where I was back in March. And other than that, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, but there's no point in me repeating what Mr. Matthews has accurately summarized.
Do we have any questions?
I guess I do. On the question of notification, you're representing the Homeowners Association, right?
Yes ma'am.
Do your homeowners, or do you, as they're representing, feel like that with the emails and all that was sent? and all that was sent, that they were given proper notice, or do you feel like they should have mailed them out?
Yeah, that's a, that's a tough question, Commissioner Commander. I mean, what I, if I said that I thought they had adequate notice, someone may disagree with me who says they didn't get notice. So I mean, I don't want to sit here and say they had adequate notice. What I will say is this. If you look at the process of notice when it's required, I think that you took action in March that never became final because I challenged it. The result of me filing a lawsuit at Flawak was to keep that decision from becoming final. And so what you're here doing today is bringing to conclusion that issue that got challenged back in March, or my challenge got filed, I think, and ultimately in May, based upon when you entered the ordinance that approved the decision that was made in March. But the point being that your action from the spring never became final action. So what you're doing today is finalizing that action. If you'll, if you think back, let's think back to our January to March timeframe, continuance of the January hearing. The same ordinance was before you. Changes were made, actually, from what was proposed in January to what was ultimately decided on by this board in March. And there was no re-notification done between January and March. And I wasn't arguing in March that you should have re-noticed because the changes have been made. So my feeling from a, from a legal perspective is because you were, if you were starting over, you would have had to give notice again. And in fact, in January, remember when SDI started this, it's been going on for two years. When SDI started this initially, and it was going to go before the board on what the original application had been, and that application got withdrawn, they then resubmitted an application sometime in, I believe, December of 2016, or 15, actually 16, I guess. And that did require a re-notification. So you, you went through a re-notification process when they withdrew their application and resubmitted that application. So they twice noticed through that hearing process. But in this case, they didn't, they didn't withdraw anything. They're modifying what you all did back in March, but they're not putting, you know, they didn't withdraw and then submit a new application. And so I think, you know, my opinion, and it's only my opinion for what it's worth, sometimes not very much, is that you're, you're on solid ground with the way this was continued and re-noticed for purposes of today's meeting.
Did you also mention to the meeting that they had at the resort, that's what I'm doing?
Sure. Mr. Matthews had asked that, so in addition to the, this public meeting, I mean, we have an advisory board. The Owners Association has an advisory board made up of all of the presidents of the various associations within Sandeston. We noticed the settlement agreement as part of the last advisory board meeting, which was about a month ago, roughly about a month ago. We presented the settlement exactly as was presented to you today to the advisory board. Any questions that were to be asked by those members of the, which are the, all the representatives of the many associations, about a 50-member board within Sandeston, came to that meeting and participated. It actually was an uneventful meeting, really. I mean, there wasn't a lot of, of back and forth relating to the settlement. But the full settlement was presented, there just wasn't any concern with it. And ultimately, that meeting concluded, and then we came here today. So from a process standpoint, as far as whether people are aware of this settlement, I can assure you, they're, they're aware of it, and they're aware you're, you're here today considering this, whether they got a piece of paper in their mailbox or not. And legally, I don't think they had to get a piece of paper in their mailbox. That's my opinion.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Sydney, did you mind explaining what Mr. Matthews was talking about, our stand as the county regarding certification and notice of mailing?
Well, so I think both Mr. Matthews and Mr. Hunter addressed the argument about why they believe notification was not required. I completely understand their arguments that were made, but in an abundance of caution to address this issue, I did ask, and SDI agreed, to indemnify the county if there were any claims in the future that would arise over the notice issue. And SDI did that, and as you remember, the board approved that indemnity agreement at the last meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So to that point, just as a further aside on this issue, I mean, let's assume notice, let's assume I'm wrong, and Mr. Matthews is wrong, and you had to mail notice. I mean, what would that mean? That would mean somebody would file a lawsuit and say proper notice wasn't issued. You'd go to a judge, or you could circumvent it, go into a judge and say, "We'll cure that. We'll just give notice. We'll just make SDI pay 40-something thousand dollars and go give them a mail notice." And you'd show back up here and do exactly what we did today, whatever it is you end up doing today after, you know, whatever amount of time, passage of time is necessitated by that action. So that's the only distinction in what the ultimate outcome would be, is just another procedural battle over whether notice. And you can, there'd be an easy way to cure that, if somebody filed a lawsuit, just say, "Well, we'll, we'll move that lawsuit by going and giving the notice and re-noticing the hearing." So it's fixable, correctable, if indeed there were a problem. I don't think there is.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
Yes, ma'am.
It's now time for public comments. Would you like to limit? What's the pleasure of the board in limiting? Do you want to do three minutes?
How many people do we have?
Unless someone came in later, we have three.
Oh, and I don't, I don't see any reason to limit it.
I don't either. Okay. All right. The first one is Karen Hinds.
Wait a minute. Sidney, because this is part of the...
Well...
Can we limit?
Okay. We have in the past limited public comment, even on quasi-judicial land use decisions, whenever we had a set time and a significant number of people. If we really only have three, that may not be something you guys want to consider. But we obviously have our board meeting at four, so if public comment does drag on for too long, if more than three people want to speak, you, it's perfectly acceptable for you to decide to vote to limit the public comment.
Could I see a show of hands of anyone that did not sign up that would like to speak? So one more? Okay. All right.
Let's give them at least five. I say, I mean, we have, what is it? One, thirty seconds.
Okay, do I have a motion for five minutes?
Motion.
Motion, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, five minutes. Come on, Ms. Hinds.
It's real short.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm just a concerned citizen. I'm here to urge you to vote no based upon Dr. Henry Harper's findings and signage that I've found at Legion Park warning me of contaminated water. And I based it upon the fact that what Mr. Harper's saying, that storm drainage possibly due to Sandeston was causing it. Are they in compliance? Will they stay in compliance? Who knows? Adding more, you know, real estate and more things that would cause more storm drainage issues. I'm just concerned. Please say no, and think about it a little bit more. Thank you.
Would you, would you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Karen Hinds, H-I-N-D-S, and Karen with two As.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carolyn Zoney? Caroline Zoney, excuse me.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak. As I was preparing my comments, I was aware that I recognized a disconnect between what my county government does and what I, as a resident, and what I hear my neighbors want. I expect that Commissioners are elected to steward this amazing place that we call home, to vote to protect the land and water, and to enhance the safety and well-being of residents and visitors. So often I come to these meetings, and I hear neighbor after neighbor ask the same thing, less construction, more conservation, more safety. I then discovered that my elected officials have voted just the opposite of the preponderance of testimony that I hear. So I went to the webpage from Walton County looking for answers. What is our mission statement as a county? What is the role of the Walton County Commissioners? I expected to see a statement of how blessed we are to be home to world-renowned rare coastal dune lakes, about the geological wonder of the white sand beaches, the increasingly rare solitude of our beautiful forests and state parks. Next, I moved to find job descriptions or position statements for my Commissioners. I found Commissioners that state, "She improved our county government with honesty and integrity, placing her emphasis on people and open government, not politics or special interests." And she promises to just do the right thing every time, even when you think no one is looking. She understands tourism and understands being a resident, homeowner, and taxpayer in this county. She promises to stop catering to special interest groups and give the people what they want. And Commissioner who states his priorities are to create more job opportunities for residents while reducing taxes and improving county infrastructure and protecting Walton County's beaches. Then I went to the Planning Department. I looked up goals, objectives, and policies. And there, in Chapter Four, the Resource Protection Policy, states to protect, conserve, and enhance Walton County's natural features. It is the intent of the county to enhance resource protection by utilizing development management techniques to control potential negative impacts from development and redevelopment. Specifically, it's the intent of the county to limit specific impacts and cumulative impacts of development or redevelopment upon wetlands, coastal dune lakes, water quality, water quantity, wildlife habitats, living marine resources, or other natural resources." These are your words. This is right from the Walton County page. So I'm here today to speak against more construction at Sandeston. As it stands, the develop is not, the development is not able to fulfill the requirements of water treatment and preventing untreated wastewater runoff directly into the bay. There is already evidence of ecological impact from this, from non-compliance. If they can't follow these sanitation codes with the amount of development there currently, how will more construction, additional development, and increased population improve the situation? So Commissioners, it doesn't seem to me like this proposed change to Sandeston should pass if you are true to your words. So I hope you will vote against more development at Sandeston and begin strict enforcement of water quality testing and reporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Samuel Osborne.
For the record, Alan Osborne, O-S-B-O-R-N-E. First of all, I object to the notice because I don't have an attorney here on this, right? I settled on the old NOPC. I don't have one. There's many other people out there that never got notice. I think it's a shame, right off the bat, what you watched here today. Mr. Matthews' words are poignant. He didn't say we solved the issue, we agreed not to press it. And nobody knows in this county what was negotiated between these people, but I know what you're negotiating with them. You're putting yourself where you put a private developer between you and the citizens that put you there. When you say, "If we're not doing it right, and you sue us, he'll have to pay for it," you're saying, "Go ahead, citizens, the burden's on you to sue us, and then we won't be responsible for it. He'll answer for us because we're going to do the wrong thing for him." That's what an indemnity agreement is, because you have doubt whether you're doing the right thing, so she's protecting your interests by getting you indemnified. It don't make you right. It makes you wrong all day long. You're here for the people. Now, I started this 2005, when I told you they weren't doing it right, and immediately Interwest stopped reporting. Nothing's changed. Except, most of you have never spent a night there, and I've spent 4,000. I've waited at that bay. And I, and I didn't tell you every time I came up here, but I let independent people pull those water samples I sent you. I didn't pull those. Those are your own Bay Alliance. And you got to ask yourself, if Black Creek is not dirty and the water flows that way, look at that picture I sent you. You can see it. As soon as it hits the current, it goes to Okaloosa County. That ain't fake. And guess what? Even before we had satellites, we've got imagery here because of our great military base back to the 50s, and that sludge isn't there. It starts about the time Dr. Harper takes off, and all that other stuff in Baytown takes off. It's clear. The water readings, water readings are intermediate contamination levels for nitrogen. There are no herring in my backyard anymore, very few crabs, and I've been on that water 20-something years. This isn't secondhand information, it's mine. And you have the empirical data that you paid for. Don't you find it strange that suddenly Dr. Harper doesn't want to talk to you, and all he's got left to do is run the table? He's already made the decision that you refused. A special magistrate told you to hire somebody. You agreed. That's who you wanted to hire. And then you've refused to read his results into the record that say every part of Sandeston, dependent on its topographical structure, will have a different retaining. But you know in the 20-some percent that you have evaluated, you're over 80% non-compliant. And I think why you're doing it is because you're paying to put those pipes into Driftwood right now, and you're going to do the same thing. Now, the applicant owns the golf course on the other side of the berm where that water goes. But you're not going to make him take it. You're going to cut a deal. And when Driftwood approved, a condition of approval that Renee Bradley testified in sworn deposition, doesn't matter whether she settled, we settled or not, doesn't change the fact that she testified a condition of that neighborhood was that a road be opened, and the, and the SOA said we would open it. And when they said that, they were owned by the declarant. And then when the homeowners took over, they changed their mind after the plat. You should enforce it. So you're going to cut a deal with the people who control your road, that keep us from being in compliance with coastal center? You're going to cut a deal with a guy that doesn't want to fill in a golf course later on because he'll lose his drainage? If he's got to maintain his drainage like he should, he can't build on those golf courses he's going to tear down in the future, right? This is all about money. This is about buying a position. Nothing has changed in 11 years. Only three things were in place for Sandeston to be compliant. Traffic, open space, and stormwater runoff. Even in '76, we knew that property was fragile. You change the definition of open space to where that's a ditch, that's our great recreation area, a road right away. And now you're going to, with incomplete traffic study, a lack of notice, and indemnifying everybody that you're giving permission to, you're going to cut a deal? If you don't like what you see on social media, expect a bunch more of it, because not a lot of us are going to stand for it. People just got tired of coming here because they know they have no faith in you. We stood out there, and you didn't get us a bigger area, and the old people left. They're settling because they're tired of spending their money to let you do this. That's why they're settling, not because they think it's right. As Dana said, they're just not pressing the issue. They're tired of it. I'm not. I'll come here as long as you poison the bay. You should do something about it. And to not say something about the evidence that I gave you, that's your own evidence. You're all just being cowards to the people, every one of you.
Mine's going to be real quick, but...
If you would state your name and spell your last name.
Suzanne Harris, S-U-Z-A-N-N-E, Harris, H-A-R-R-I-S. Mine's going to be quick. But one time, I came here and said something, and I was told by Mr. Jones, "Well, if you don't like it, sue us." And I did, and I won. So there are not many people that'll put their money where their mouth is, but believe it or not, I am one of them. I think you have the biggest possibility of the best sunshine lawsuit I've ever filed against Walton County if Cecilia and Tony Anderson vote on this. I have talked to many people in Tallahassee, and my attorney and I believe this is probably the best lawsuit ever. Maybe I need to file that I wasn't noticed, but I'm not within the 300 feet. But if I were going to make 30 million, I'd probably spend 44,000 to have sent out the notices and not just stood around and said, "Well, if you don't like, somebody doesn't like it, they can just sue, and then we'll fix it." You're just forcing people to sue you. But all these ex parte forms y'all filled out, where it says, Ms. Jones, like on January 30th, 2017, on Driftwood, on Sandeston, NOPC, phone calls and communications, persons communicating, varied. Substance of communication, site visit or investigation, varied. That is absolutely keeping from the public, and Tony Anderson, I have yours too, that is keeping from the public who you met with and what you talked about. Now, you can say, "Well, our biggest investor, our best friend," or whatever, but that's why these exportation forms, ex parte forms are there. You're both being sued at the end of this week by a totally different group on these same ex parte forms. And I'm telling you, and it's to do with a whole different subdivision other than this, y'all know... Y'all know what exhortate forms are. You know what you're supposed to put on it. It's so the public, when we get them, we can see, Ms. Jones, if you met with Lloyd Blue, or if you met with Mr. Becknell, or maybe you met with Mr. Osborne, but you can't just put varied on them. And if y'all vote today, I promise you, this will be my next sunshine lawsuit. But I think I'll name you both personally and see where we go on this one.
Ms. Harris, behind varied are my emails, my phone conferences. Every item is behind the varied exhortate form.
Ms. Jones, they might be now, but they were not when we did our public records search. When we did the public records search and asked for every bit of that, of course, the only thing we got was this. So they may be attached now, but they weren't when we got them.
So you asked, I know what public records requests is referring to. She asked for the forms. We provided her with the forms, but there's backup documentation for each one of those forms, and we didn't realize that that's what she wanted. We can easily get that for her. If you haven't heard your.
And I assure you, you're not going to bully me into a vote at yea or nay. Okay. Any other comments from the audience?
I didn't ask yet.
Any other comments from the audience? Seeing none?
I would like, Mr. Matthews, do you have any other thing to add to?
No, the only thing that I would add for the first three speakers, they were addressing issues about Driftwood that have been presented at every public meeting that I've been to on Sandeston. You've heard from them, they're lawyers, they're experts. These issues have been resolved. I think everybody knows in this room, but for the record, that Mr. Osborne has been involved in litigation with the county for many, many years on these exact same issues. It's not like these things haven't been vetted out. And again, our purpose today was a very limited purpose of approving some reduction in entitlements and restrictions on entitlement on an ordinance that had previously been approved by this board back when they signed it on April eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, pursuant to a very long, drawn-out, detailed settlement process. That's all I have.
And I want to commend both of you for sitting down and coming to this place today. I know that I've had emails that bathrooms are in disrepair, buildings are in disrepair, so now you can go on with your life, and I commend both of you for bringing us to this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve this.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion from the Commission?
Uh, no.
Any discussion from the constituents? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay, and I would like to state my reason why. I've often told my children that you go the extra length to make sure that things are done right. I realize that it would have cost money to do this. I commend the parties for agreeing, sitting down and agreeing to do it, but I think that extra mile, even though it would have cost some money, would have assured the public that everything was, you know, up and above board. So that is my reason for voting no.
Thank you. Right motion to adjourn.
Second.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Matthews.
If I may, this has been provided electronically to Ms. Noye's office. Anytime when you have some of our exhibits, the ordinance that are on these spreadsheets, and you print them out from multiple emailing, they become so small you can't read them. So what we've done is actually typed, I mean, prepared a clean, redlined revised ordinance that y'all just approved with the exhibits that are legible in twelve-by-eighteen form if necessary. Mr. Hunter.
Do we, we started the motion. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. What are we doing here?